Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, August 19th, 2020. Do you have a roll call, please?
Al?
Here.
Garrity?
Here.
Nordentoff? Half? Haystack?
Here.
Riley? Sula?
Present. We have a quorum of four, right? Oh, okay, there's Mr. Nordentoff. Pursuant to the Governor's orders, some of us are participating remotely due to the COVID-19 situation, so I'd just like to give that in the record. Would everybody please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the, sorry, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our meeting that was held on July 15th. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. By.
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrity. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the update to our comprehensive land use plan, Compass 2040. Who's giving staff report, Dave?
Tracy, we've just got a little something prepared.
A comp plan is a guide to a community's physical, social, and economic development. The plan helps form other regulatory documents that implement the community's goals and objectives that are outlined in the plan. The existing comprehensive land use plan was last updated in 1997. Staff in the zoning board of appeals have been working with the village's consultant, Camero's, over the last several years on the update of the village's comprehensive land use plan. Public workshops and meetings have been held over this timeframe in order to review the village's goals and objectives, policies, existing conditions, existing land use map, future land use map based on goals and objectives, sub-area plans, and a first full draft of the comprehensive land use plan. Arista and, I guess just Arista, no Chris, from Camero's are here to present the plan to the planning zoning board in hopes that we can move this forward for adoption to the village board.
Tracy, aside from the members of the planning and zoning board, are any members from the public participating by Zoom?
No.
Nope, so, and there's nobody here in person either, so, okay. And it's a public hearing, or is it, do we need to swear anybody in?
I guess we could do that.
Okay. I think Arista's the only one that needs to be sworn in.
Okay, Arista, will you raise your hand? Swear the whole truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, the floor is yours.
Okay, great. I think, okay, now I've got it, okay.
You certainly do.
So if you hear my voice being scratchy and coughing, no one worry, I have bad allergies. This is really all, all related to sinus issues. I haven't left my house since I was here last time in February 19th to do the presentation for the introduction, so. So we're here tonight to review the comprehensive plan and what's contained within it. As you know, the comprehensive plan, Compass 2040, it's the community's vision for the future, looking at a typical 20-year planning horizon, organized into five main sections that talk about land use, community character areas, economic development, the environment, and open space, as well as mobility. Kind of the cornerstone of this plan rests within the vision that's established in the early part of the document, as you've probably seen, and really just talks about the future that we envision for Gurnee moving forward. So it really highlights, I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but highlights a number of different key points. It wants to be a place where you can live, work, and play, as it says, a fun destination, a place to raise your family, a place that has a balance of land uses as well as a diverse amount of housing stock located within it, that you can accommodate people, ranges of incomes, ranges of ages as well, looking at ensuring good public services as well as good public transport, really kind of the key things that make a good high quality of life for a community in a village such as this. You'll see in the beginning of the plan that there is a community profile contained in there that summarizes existing conditions based on the data that was available to the date that we wrote the plan, so these are really the, just the categories that you'll see where we've listed things out, everything from the history to a variety of things on the population profile, economics, demographics. Is that me doing that?
I don't know where that's coming from. I don't know where that's coming from.
It's coming from here.
Well, it's, it's coming from one of the microphones.
It's somebody on their phone.
Okay.
Okay.
So one of the, the first category that we looked at is land use, and how do we balance the land uses within the village to accommodate residents, the economic engines that are here, as well as unique things like the entertainment components? And so it's really looking at creating a diverse economy, a diverse use of land uses, and as well as diverse types of housing. So what you see is we, our first analysis was done looking at existing land use, and as you see, these are the large versions of the maps that are in the plan, and based on these categories, which are fairly kind of standard existing land use categories, and based on your current existing land use map and updated to reflect current conditions now. And you can see that here within this map that shows kind of where all these different land uses are. And then we updated the categories, so really looking at things like low-density residential and medium-density residential, what are those numbers? Combining high-density residential and multifamily into one category that looks at it that way, being a little bit more specific on commercial and business, looking at commercial and then looking at kind of the larger entertainment areas, office and service, which is office uses, as well as unique areas like the East Grand Corridor, as well as the Village Center. Industrial got split into industrial and industrial mixed use, which are industrial areas that are transitioning, as well as public, quasi-public, which are divided into public, semi-public facilities, parks, as well as utility and the railroad. And so that kind of shows you with these a bit more refined categories from the existing land use, kind of where we want to go into the future, and just really looking at kind of all those areas, those categories that you've said, you can see them located there on the map, as well as in the document and on that bigger board that's located over there. The changes aren't radical changes, many of them are acknowledging things that are on the ground now that weren't acknowledged within the existing land use map. So residential was really just looking at making sure that we're addressing the residential character of the established neighborhoods, perhaps a couple of higher-density areas. Commercial, we acknowledge, again, those kind of key areas that even have their own name, the Village Center and the East Grand Gateway, and adjustments of the type of commercial, as I said, kind of singling out the entertainment, and then again, looking at a new industrial mixed use category. And from the last time, this map looks a little bit different from the one you saw in the previous version, what we did was basically only highlighted the areas of change, so we basically popped those out of the future land use map. So it's a little bit easier to see what areas have changed designations from existing into the future categories. And again, it's kind of looking at these areas of office, industrial, and then you can see the industrial mixed use coming in there, as well as those areas transitioned to have more than just straight industrial uses. So really, our goals, the kind of goals, objectives, and policies within each of these, you know, we're really looking at, you know, a balanced land use goal, we want to balance the land uses here in the village. So one of the objectives is maintaining that balance. So you can see here that, you know, you have a number of policies described within the plan that talk about diverse housing types, supporting the existing commercial base, looking at bringing in more office and industrial, so kind of less reliance on retail entertainment type uses, looking at studies for senior housing, as we know that's an issue, you can see a full discussion of that within the plan, and then growing responsibly where existing and planned services and facilities would be. We want a positive image for those that visit Gurnee, and so it's really just kind of a couple of things that we wanted to highlight here, gateway features at major entries could be something the village considers in the future, kind of looking at that relationship between east and west Gurnee, a number of things with streetscape, both improving the modality along those streetscapes, as well as things just like the urban tree canopy coming in, and even encouraging the bearing of utility lines, so it's really kind of aesthetic policies that we've established here. And this map, which is also in the plan, shows you kind of those key areas that we've pointed out can be some of the key gateways coming into the village. In terms of the community character areas, this is a little bit more refinement of the land use from future land use and existing land use, and really looking at a couple of areas within the village. The first is the Village Center, which exists now, is really in your zoning ordinance as the Village Center. We had come before, I believe, the Village Board and spoken to them about kind of where we wanted to go with that, and the idea was kind of to maintain and reinforce that existing character. You had an urban land institute study done for the East Grand Gateway, and essentially what we've done is summarize that because it's gotten very specific in terms of kind of revitalization strategies that can be used. And then we created two new sub-area plans, and both of these are very conceptual, they're not a zoning, they're not a zoning district, but they're ways to kind of imagine what these areas that now really don't have anything on them can evolve to in the future, and what are some of the things that the village would like to see. The first one here, kind of as you come in off the expressway, Oak Plain and Belvedere, as you can see, we went through a couple of iterations with the board to kind of get to where we needed to be, and as you see here, we've got commercial kind of right along that road that's coming in, and then as you move back further, you can see a mix of different uses, finally transitioning to some multifamily and some single-family attached town home type uses, but trying to maintain kind of a balance between those two to create this kind of town center area, but one that can facilitate commercial development, but at the same time create that kind of buffer against the adjacent residential development through the town homes that are signified there along the bottom. Oops, okay. The next one was a parcel, it's different from the one we just looked at, this is Washington and Milwaukee, and it's really kind of a large area, so there's really three different things going on within the subareas, so there's sub-areas within the subarea plan. The first is, the main one is this kind of entertainment commercial type, envisioning an entertainment type commercial use that's located there. You can see it's kind of got its own little main streets turned inward into the development the way that we've proposed it, and again, this is all conceptual and can be changed if development comes forward for these areas. You can see some commercial, there's some hotel, there's even some mixed use development contained within there as well. The other parcel, kind of up in the corner there, is really just looking at an industrial mixed use facility based upon kind of what that area could be used for, how does it, what's the most beneficial use for that, and really looking at, you could do something that's a little bit more flexible industrial in that area. And then finally, the last section, kind of towards the bottom, is really just a continuation of the already existing multifamily development that's there, basically mimicking that pattern down through the area. So moving from land use, we looked at economic development, and, you know, we wanted to make sure that, you know, you have an economy here that supports your residents, provides jobs, funds public services, so how do we continue to support that, how do we attract new types of jobs here, and how do we balance that and make sure that there's a variety in place? The first is the kind of growth and redevelopment of office and industrial, and you see some of the policies that are in place here, protecting your existing areas, marketing those areas that may be vacant, and you have this great advantage of I-94 and US-41, and making sure that we're kind of situating things there to take advantage of that key asset that you have, the access, access, access asset that's in place. Again, things like marketing vacant properties, ways, strategies that this can be achieved, either working with the property owners or doing, advertising larger sites for those areas, maintaining and enhancing the truck route, we know it's a little bit more complicated because you work with Lake County as well as with IDOT, but really making sure that those areas are, those types of roadways are maintained, making sure that truck traffic can move through, that it doesn't kind of encroach into neighborhoods or areas where it shouldn't, and even doing things such as identifying gaps within that truck route area. And then, again, one of the policies, one of the objectives, less reliance on retail and maybe increasing professional employment within the village, and what are some of the policies that would help to achieve that objective? So we've kind of summarized some of the tools to spur industrial and office development, and one of the other ones that we talked about, which I know is kind of a longer-term goal, is the idea of public transit, because in particular for, you know, professional employment, people many times want to take public transit there, how can we get them moving into the city not necessarily on, or in the village, not necessarily in a car? And then the regional attractions, obviously you have these key assets of Gurnee Mills, Six Flags, as well as Great Wolf Lodge, you know, how do we allow them to kind of adapt and change as needed? We know we're kind of in a weird state right now, in particular with those kind of big three guys and the situation we're in now, but hopefully moving forward into the future, things start to get back to normal, and so making sure that they continue to be supported. One of the most valuable things in any community is the open space, so what we want to do is make sure that we promote and protect that where it's in place here in the village. So really, again, maintaining and enhancing your park and recreation areas, it's always a key objective, you've got good stuff here, we want to make sure we protect that, so it's really looking at protecting those resources from encroachment, you know, working with the park district to create greenways that connect all these different areas, making sure that there's regulations in place that protect it when development comes in, that those are maintained, and even looking at things like how you get people to these areas, such as when you're looking at where you're putting new pad and bike paths, where do those goes, and where do those go, and how can they help connect these areas together? Mitigating flooding impacts, again, this is a key thing, in particular when this issue pops up in any community, so really looking at what are some strategies for that that we can address moving forward, issues of storm water management, looking at delineations of wetlands and flood plains, and then how do we require that designation on development plans so that way we're aware when those areas are in those, are in new development properties, and maybe even acquiring land subject to repetitive loss for those greenways. And finally, the last category of the plan, mobility, and one of the things is, is we know that we want to make sure that we kind of move forward into multimodal, multimodal types of transportation networks, which also help to do things like reduce the negative impacts on the environment, so what are some of the strategies that the comp plan puts forward that the village can move forward with? The first is this concept of complete streets, and complete streets is really a way for everybody to move safely along the same pathway, whether it be walking, biking, driving, for all the different types of users. So it's really looking at maybe one of the first steps is to adopt that complete street strat, complete streets policy in the village, and looking at that for redevelopment of existing streets, or if you're going to construct any new streets. Again, that could be one of the ways to start to connect east and west, and we talk about that in the plan for a little bit, and then looking at ways to start installing pad and bike improvements in existing areas, and maybe even into the future, as well as, you know, roadway crossings, which is a key thing to get people, obviously, from one side of the street to the other. You do have the pedestrian and bicycle trail master plan, and we acknowledge that within this comprehensive plan and look at ways that we can kind of continue to make connections to, for bicyclists and pedestrians, both internal to the village, both leaving the village, and looking at focusing that bike and pad type strategies on some key streets that are here that get people around the village, those being listed there as Grand, Washington, Almond, Milwaukee Avenue, Route 21, Hunt Club Road, Dilly's Road, Gauges Lake Road, so some of those that we've highlighted, that we know that they can use some focused attention moving forward with any kind of infrastructure improvements to those areas. And then finally, public transit, you know, how do we continue to improve public transit? Looking at pace, identifying service, working with pace, identifying service gaps, and starting to see how we can kind of bridge those and bring more bus transit into this, into the village, and then just continuing to explore metro, Amtrak options moving into the future, again, that kind of links back to those kind of increasing professional employment, how do we get people into the village, continuing to look and see if there's options available for such. And with that, that really kind of provides a big overview of the comprehensive plan. We were here last time, and then we took comments to heart, some of them were kind of the way that the plan was organized, we went, we went through and fixed those, but I'd be happy to take any questions that anyone has.
Okay. Thank you very much. First, I'd like to start out by saying, great job on the document, I mean, it's, it's really put together well, and the tools in there that helped us understand the areas of change really made our role here a lot easier, and I, for one, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any, any questions or comments by members? Yes, Tim?
Good evening, great job.
Thank you.
So, really comprehensive and, and covered a lot of areas. One area that I wanted to cover with you is the role of increasing professional employment in Gurnee in the future. We obviously see a trend with retail, pandemics kind of spurred it on, but, you know, we, we see many online businesses overtaking brick and mortar, mortar retail, and one of the areas you talked about again was increasing professional employment. I like the, talking about the metro and bringing in folks in from the city or from other suburbs, our train tracks even go to Milwaukee, you could come back, you know, that way, have an Amtrak stop, but one of the things that I find inconsistent in going through here is that on the maps and, and the different callouts here, like for the mixed use development focus, the Washington and Milwaukee, there's no real plan to, or nothing showing for specific office, you know, if we have folks that are coming into a metro station, say, in the Village Center, and we need buses to get them over, shuttle buses to a corporate office location, for example, nowhere do I see that in any of the maps. In fact, it looks like, contrary to the slides that you put up, I see increased commercial zones, but not really anything that speaks to specifics, unless I'm meeting, missing it, that would increase the professional, you know, maybe a corporate office location, a campus or something. So I wanted you to comment on that, because I think that's missing from this whole presentation as to, you know, we're talking about professional jobs, but yet I'm not seeing anything in the presentation that speak to that, which I think that some of these areas, like Milwaukee and Washington, that could be an area where we would look at a corporate office campus, so maybe if you could kind of speak to that and balance that out for me.
Yeah, I, just on a couple of things regarding that as well, so what we've looked at when we, when you see the subarea plans and you see things that say mixed or commercial, they don't exclude office, so we maybe need to be a little clear on that, they're just conceptual, and we kind of looked at them kind of based, so when you see industrial mixed use, there is always a presumption that that could be almost primarily office, you could get something that's got maybe a small R and D component to it in there, but it could be office as well, so the categories are, they're a little more fluid than kind of the names belie, but we have to name them all something. So within those subarea plans, and again, those are conceptual and, and can be changed, we were using office as kind of a, as a transition from the commercial area kind of at Belvedere and Oak Plain, commercial there, and then transitioning to office, and then transitioning to residential to buffer against the residential development, so tried to bring that, bring that into the plan at least, and the commercial could be office as well. And so as we looked at it, that's why we kind of started looking at this industrial mixed use category, because you do have areas of industrial which could have offices in them, mixed use can kind of start to maybe focus on having more office there. I'm not sure I'm getting to the heart of the question.
Yeah, I think it's just more of a conversation at this point. I, I think that, you know, again, my concern would be that, you know, we're, I, I just wanted the conversation to occur of, we're, we're saying that we're wanting to maybe focus away a little bit from retail going forward, but yet we're looking at maybe having a whole commercial zone with that, that area at Milwaukee and, and Washington. I just, I'm worried about future store vacancies, we're over, overabundance in the years to come of, you know, empty retail space, when we're taking a look here at 10 or 20, you know, years out, that we're preparing for that, that, you know, might be a complete bold new look 10 years from now. That's it.
Right, yeah, and the commercial, the commercial land use category won't exclude office, so if things are starting to go vacant there and people are kind of building these new offices, or if, you know, retail all goes online and you just need an office to control that, you know, they can move into those spaces, so it's not like these categories are meant to be just completely very rigid, when it says commercial, it's got to be retail, that's not the case, this is, we're kind of looking at it from a kind of really high-level policy standpoint. When you get into the zoning, you'll see most commercial districts allow for office, the Village Center is, has a lot of good potential for office, which I think we talked about, because it works really well with the residential around it.
If I may interject here, from, from my perspective, what, what the comprehensive land use plan does is it puts out a vision of possibilities.
Sure.
And I think you might be asking for a level of detail that's impossible to accomplish, because unless something is proposed to change, it's, it's really hard to envision what infrastructure improvements might be possible without knowing the specifics of a particular.
Yeah, I wasn't wanting to get into the down and dirty on it.
It sounded like you did, though.
Well, I'll bring it, I'll elevate it back up to 100,000-foot level.
Okay.
On the existing map, I'm seeing, I'm seeing on the new map for 2040, I'm seeing more red commercialization than we have right now, but what, during the presentation, we're talking about increased office and professional jobs, so at 100,000-foot level, how does that jive?
And if I can just interject, I think Arista had a really good point in that, that magenta color that's on our, on the new land use map, that's all new, and it's, as she said, mixed use, and that is really intended to be not just straight industrial, it's, right, exactly, so all of that is, could potentially be all-new office area, a lot of that on our previous plan, for example, that lower southwest quarter of like the Grand Tri-State Industrial Park on the previous plan was residential, low-density residential on the previous comp plan, so there is a lot of increase, it's just, you're not seeing it in the light blue, the straight office, it's more in the mixed industrial or mixed use category.
Which is really where we're seeing our demand right now, the, the straight traditional office has been soft in this area for many years, and with the recent pandemic and the trend for more people living at home, the need for, you know, traditional office space may be even softer in the future.
Would that change, though, with the metro station as part of the?
The metro station is a difficult add, probably 25 years ago, we did a study to determine what it would take to get a metro station here, and it's basically laying new tracks from Roundout in Libertyville up to this area, and it was tens of millions of dollars in just infrastructure, plus then cars and those, how it was.
But, but we also, but we also don't want to discount the possibility, I mean, you know, when the Olympics was talked about potentially for Chicago, you know, they were looking at potentially the equestrian up in the Wadsworth area, and so there was our opportunity potentially to get a metro line extension, so we want to keep that in the comp plan, it's like a dream if we can try to work toward it, but again, getting back to this whole pandemic thing, you know, that hit like right as we're pretty much trying to complete this comp plan, we might need to take a look at this a lot sooner and just maybe tweak it, because there's going to be a lot of changes probably coming into the future, as David said, with people working more remotely, so, you know, we may be needing to go back and fine-tune this a little.
Yeah, I was just going to say, on page 14, what struck me the other day, is you have a couple of different stats here that I found very interesting here, and one is over to the left, which is, you know, who are our biggest employers, and you see all these retailers, Bass Pro, Gurnee Mills, Menards, Jewel Osco, Target, of course, the Village of Gurnee is on here, which is great, and then you see over to the right of that, where do Gurnee residents live and work, so that you have, surprisingly, Chicago, 8.3%, which is higher than even Waukegan, and then where do Gurnee workers reside, the third one down is Chicago, so even without a metro station, you're still having people come from Chicago, and we still have people going to Chicago, and what does this mean with retail, really, you, you know, it's going to be a, a completely different world as we move forward with it, and I think that's where this kind of made me think of, you know, how are we, how are we thinking as we have more people that are going to be unable to come to Chicag, from Chicago for a service job, and we have more at-home workers who may want to have offices closer to home, because they're not going to be able to go to Chicago, maybe for whatever reason. It's just an idea, just something to think about, changing demographics. It's just an idea, just something to think about, changing demographics, a retail-based economy where retail is changing, and we may not be a retail-based economy 10, 15, 20 years from now. So I've taken enough time, thank you.
Any other, yes, Mr. Nordentoff?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. I'm, I'm very pleased that we're at the threshold of having this available to us to use, because we've, we've been leaning on the old one for a while, and it's been difficult for us to be able to get some real strong guidance on a lot of different projects over the last 10 years or so, because so much has changed, and, and the older document was really very difficult to use for guidance, and so this is obviously much overdue and needed. And so I'm, I'm pleased we're going to have this to be able to, to use for guidance as we move forward. Also appreciative of the fact that we have now illustrated what the changes were, because that was a hard thing for me to kind of sort through, you know, side by side, and so this really helps a lot. One of the other things I want to comment on, though, was the connectivity east and west. And I know we started some of this, and, and I, I just want to comment on what I've witnessed firsthand for some of what we've done over on the far western edge of Gurnee, where I live. The Forest Preserve did a connectivity spur right at Route 45 at the, at the edge of Ravinia Woods to connect in the edge of the village there into the Rollin Savannah. And interesting timing, of course, with the pandemic and a lot of people now at home and looking for additional avenues for recreation and whatnot. But from my perspective, where my neighborhood is, it is literally like a highway of bicycles and pedestrians making their way in and out of that west edge of the village to go into the Savannah. It's been incredible, the amount of increased foot traffic, bicycle traffic and everything. So clearly, there's a lot of people thirsty for that kind of connectivity and whatnot. And so, you know, if, if we're able to use this and lean on this to find other ways to increase that, that's a great thing, because, you know, just here, that just opened up this spring. You could get into Savannah through there before, nobody really knew, only insiders knew how to do it, but now it's been phenomenal. And so for us to be able to prioritize that, or continue to prioritize that, is a real positive, I think, for the village, too.
I agree, and, and the timing of that opening was, was so perfect in terms of, you know, people are, I mean, it's hard to find a quality bicycle when, if you go shopping for one right now. I mean, that, that sort of activity has really increased, so. Any other questions or comments? Josh, do you have anything?
No, when we first got a look at this, I provided some, had some questions, and I think they got answered, and, and I, I'd just like to echo what Mr. Nordentoff said. It's, it's great to have this. I think there's some folks on, on this team that have been, that have been on the PZB longer than myself, and that have gone through this sort of journey, and, 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 and this is, you know, this is, I would just like to echo what he said, it's really nice to have this to kind of set a vision. And what comes to mind, you know, it's not really, you know, for discussion, it's just more of commentary. If I'm looking at, you know, things like on, on page 13, 33, and the opportunity sites, this is going to be really nice for teams of the economic development team within the village to have, you know, to, to look at, hey, you know, we can show potential tenants or teams that are looking for sites, we can, you know, show this to them, they have, we can, we can, you know, use the economic development team to, to have guidance on land use, they, they have an active partner in the PZB. It kind of brings us all together as a, as a village, and I think that's really, that's really a positive thing. So I, I don't have a lot of questions, just wanted, that's what comes to mind, I just wanted to echo Mr. Nordentoff, so thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Tracy, has anybody, has anybody from the public jumped in on Zoom?
I have not heard from anybody in the public.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to open and close the floor to the public, just as a formality. Any other questions or comments? If not, the next step would be to make a motion, whether or not to send it to the Village Board, correct? Is anybody willing to advance a motion? Mr. Nordentoff?
Yes, I move that we forward a favorable recommendation for the adoption of the proposed Compass 2040 as presented this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrity. Can we, any discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Bow.
Aye.
Garrity.
Aye.
Nordentoff.
Aye.
Haystack.
Aye.
Suwa.
Aye, motion carries. Once again, thank you very much, just an awesome job.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
And next meeting on the calendar is scheduled for September 2nd, and conversation I had with Tracy prior to the meeting, it sounds like we are going to have a meeting.
Yes.
At least two, two special use permits?
We have one special use permit for that night, and probably for the next meeting also.
Okay, okay. There's nobody here from the public, a motion to adjourn would be in order? So move? Move, move by Mr. Nordentoff, second by Mr. Bow. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.